Good evening and welcome to the, we have several meetings here tonight. Our first is Public Housing Authority Commission, of which we serve on that with one of our public housing commissioners as well. And then I will gavel out of that and we will go into our regular study session, of which many of you are here for that. So with that, I would like to call the PHEC meeting to order. Clerk, please take the roll.
Chairman Hartke.
Here.
Vice Chair Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Loring. Commissioner Encinas.
Here.
Commissioner Poston. Commissioner Orlando.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins. Here. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, do we have any unscheduled public appearances? None? Okay. Commissioners, we have two items on our consent agenda for PHEC, approval of minutes, and then the annual resolution of some write-offs. How would you like to proceed, commissioners?
Mayor.
Commissioner Harris.
Chair. I would like to approve the consent agenda, one and two.
All right.
Yeah, that's it.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second by Vice Commissioner. I gotta always get these phrases right. We have a motion and a second, discussions, conversations, or recusals, and she will do a voice vote on us.
Vice Chair Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Loring. Commissioner Encinas.
Yes.
Commissioner Poston.
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Yes.
Chairman Hartke.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, that concludes our Public Housing Authority Commission. Welcome to our, welcome to our study session, and these are taped separately, so that's why the extra drama, if we want to call it for that. I'd like to call our regular study session together. Clerk, meaning to order, clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Hartke.
Present.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Encinas.
Here.
Councilmember Poston.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. For scheduled public appearances, we only have one, although it's mighty tonight, and that is our Civic Group. I'd like to invite Councilmember Orlando to come join me up front, and council, will we take a group photo at the end, if you guys would join us as well at that point? So tonight, we want to recognize our Civic graduates, and I'd like to invite Alexis Apadaka, and Mayor and Council Public Affairs Senior Manager. You know, my title is just mayor. You've got about seven words. You are more important than me, I guess.
Well done.
Civic engagement is a very important topic to us and very important to the future of Chandler. If I, I tell people all the time that if Chandler has a superpower, it's collaboration, that we choose to work together and are able to get far more done. And this class represents that, both in your intention and desire to serve and to become more knowledgeable and to plug in to the city. So tonight, we are celebrating our Civic program and its graduates. Civic is an interactive 13-session program, providing Chandler residents with a behind-the-scenes look at city service. Those of you who have participated, you took time out of your busy lives to meet with us, other city leaders, to tour facilities, and to participate in interactive sessions and learn how our city runs. We are intensely proud to be a community where our residents are informed, involved, invested, and engaged. This program and your participation is a reflection on that, and we're grateful to each of you taking time to be in, to be part of this active program. I know that you've learned a lot, and I hope that your knowledge just doesn't get parked at the door, but whether it's committing to serve on other boards or commissions, volunteering with police, fire, libraries, other departments, I know that you will be involved. And I also hope that, as I like to say, that you have now far more information than, and understanding of how the city runs than 95% of our community. And so you become part of our superpower in terms of sharing what really goes on, and when you hear stories that are accurate, to be able to dispel myths and present truth. And I also want to say that myself and council are tremendously proud of you, Alexis. This is your fifth year pulling this together. I had to count through my T-shirt drawer selection, and you make this happen. So with that, let me turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a great overview of the program, and we're excited to recognize our 2025 Civic participants tonight. Before we get started, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the other members of Team Chandler that make this possible. Throughout the program, our participants visit with over 20 departments and divisions throughout the city, so it truly is a Team Chandler effort through our executive leadership team and our civic liaisons that make sure our participants have a really wonderful experience. So thank you to all of our staff that put their time and their efforts into making sure that our civic participants learn about the city, engage with the city, and really come out having a positive experience. So with that, I'm excited to recognize our 2025 Civic participants. Participants, when I call you up, please come to the front and join Mayor and Councilmember Orlando for your individual picture, and then stay up front. We'll have a group picture at the end, as Mayor had alluded to. So without further ado, let's welcome and congratulate Mark Yost. Who isn't here tonight? Lackluster start, but next, we have Brandon Ramirez. Thank you all again for your time and your participation in this program. Let's go ahead and take a group photo.
You don't have to go if you don't want to. All right, we've got a number of items that have been called in for presentation or questions. The first is item number four, Development Agreement with J E M B J A C D. If Kim Moyers can come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. The item before you tonight is the 202-210 South Oregon Street Reassignment of a Development Agreement with New Timelines. Just a little bit of history about this project. This was city-owned property since 2006, and it currently sits on vacant land. It's part of the Future Growth Area in the South Arizona Avenue Corridor Area Plan. In an executive session, City Council directed staff to request an RFP for this property, and in 2023, a development agreement was approved between the City of Chandler and Jimby Jack, is what we call it. Tonight, they have a request for reassignment of the development agreement and new timelines. I wanted to talk just briefly about the terms of the original agreement and then what is actually being amended. In the original agreement, the property was appraised at current price, and that's what they would purchase it for with a clawback provision. That remains. It also needed to be a minimum of a two-story building. It does allow for a three-story, and consists of a minimum of 15,000 square feet of mixed-use restaurant and retail. These are not chains, but more independent restaurants. What's new is new construction deadlines for rezoning permitting and commencement of construction, along with the change, instead of a 60-day cure period, it's a 30-day cure period, and it would allow for the reassignment of the development agreement. The new timelines that are being proposed includes a submittal of an administratively complete application by October 1st of this year, with commencement of construction to begin on October 1st, and completion of construction on October 1st of 2027. What would the next steps be? If this item is approved, Jimby Jack will reassign the amended development agreement to Everstead Ventures LLC. At that time, Everstead Ventures LLC will assume all responsibilities and timelines of the development agreement. The applicant, or excuse me, the new reassigned Everstead Ventures, Jackson Armstrong, is here to answer any questions that you may have tonight, but in the meantime, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Thank you, Kim. Councilmember Poston, start with you.
Yeah. No, thank you for the presentation, Kim. You know, my one question is that with the reassignment to the new organization, when we're talking about some of the deadlines, and I'm glad that they're reorganizing and moving forward with this project, because I think it's really neat, but with the new timelines, if anything gets missed, it won't come back to this date. It would go back and say, hey, you've been working on this for a couple of years, that sort of thing, right? That's what we could expect?
Councilma, yes. Mayor, Councilmember Poston, that is correct. These new timelines, we're working with the existing developer and the new developer, and the new developer is very well aware of what these timelines would be. That's why the cure period is also shorter, at only 30 days. So this is a project that we anticipate to move rather quickly forward.
Okay. And then my second question is, when does that new agreement get signed? Is that sort of separate from this process?
Yeah, through the Mayor, Councilmember Poston. It's a great question. We, they can't, Everstead cannot move forward until it's reassigned. Tonight, council is allowing that reassignment to happen, so that Everstead could start working with Jimby, Jimby Jack to actually purchase the property. So that, once the property has been purchased, they will work with our legal department to change the name from Jimby Jack to Everstead.
And then that, would that come before us again, or is that more of a private?
It does, through the Mayor, Councilmember Poston, it does not have to come back to council.
Okay.
But will come back to council is as they go through the PAD and PDP process, you'll still continue to see the renderings as this rezoning comes through. So you'll still see this project one more time before it starts.
And then one new addition was the grocer, right?
They, yes, they are tried.
Am I allowed to say, I was very excited about that. We can use that in downtown.
It's my dream for 11 years. I'm hoping so, too.
Congratulations.
Yes, let's hope.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Additional questions or comments for Kim or Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Encinas.
My microphone off there. Kim, you answered my question here, because it is going to come back to us once rezoning, because the project, the design has changed, and I know the developer has made some, some great improvements and stuff as far as like the height, because that height is becoming a consideration in downtown as well, and so I know they're taking into consideration the neighborhood, their surrounding neighbors and stuff, but I know we'll reach that now that you said it's coming back for rezoning at that time. So that answered my question for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Going back to the sale of the, of the property and everything, is that something that's already been spoken? They already arrived at an agreement, now they're just waiting on us to go sign papers, correct?
Through the Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is correct. Jimby Jack had already purchased the property from the city. Everstead is purchasing the property for the exact same price. We did not want them, the development agreement did not allow for them to make a profit by selling it again, so it'll be done at the exact same price.
Thank you. That was going to be my second question, because I didn't want that to happen. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, called in by Vice Mayor Ellis, item number six, and Kevin Mayo, I think you're talking to us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a presentation, we can walk through the history of medical marijuana, recreational marijuana from the state through the city, if council would like. If you kind of would rather just talk about the limited request that is tonight and timing, happy to go either way.
Not at all. I didn't want to go back then, because we already know what happened, the host's already up. So what, the question that I have, if the applicant or the applicant lawyer will be, is just understanding that, so that people of Chandler are well aware that we are still regulating, and that if anything happened, whatever it is that we vote on tonight, if anything happened, we still have the power to pull licenses and then stop the progress because something is wrong, and it's not within the purview of what the city expects of them. That's all I wanted to be explained tonight, so that we can move forward.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Happy to answer that.
Yes, Mr.
Vice Mayor, this is simply just changing a time condition of a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is, will still remain, all the regulations that go into that conditional use permit remain exactly the same that they are today. The only difference is that instead of having to come back every single year, it can be a case-by-case decision by City Council on an appropriate time for that, that example. Over time, when I first started two decades ago, we had a very rigid timeline for use permits. They would follow a one-year, a three-year, a five-year, and then we would consider letting them go unlimited. Over time, we have migrated away from that. At the direction of council, we've been, especially in the last two to four years, we've been really walking that back, having a short timeframe in the beginning, make sure that they're good kind of corporate citizens and neighbors, and then kind of cutting them loose, since we always have the ability to revoke a use permit if they're not compliant with the conditions of that original use permit. So this is really the final step for this, this is the last use permit that we have that has a one-year rigid time condition. This walks it back to aligning with kind of council's policy general over all other types of use permits that we process. But to your point, originally, all the regulations stay the same, they're not changing, and it can always be revoked if they are not compliant with those.
Perfect. We'll put it on the record. Appreciate that, Mr. Mayor.
Kevin, I've got a question. So are there others that are still kind of, I'm trying to remember that, like a dog permit in South Chandler, that are there others that are still more of a one-year, three-year, five-year, where we're at in general with, what is the city norm now?
Good question, Mayor. So the city norm, any new ones going forward, we start off with a short, sometimes it's one-year, sometimes it's two-year, whatever we determine is the amount of time that's necessary to get them ramped up to full speed, and then kind of test them to see if they are, if they're, if they're a good neighbor. And then generally, we bring forward a continuation of that use permit with no time condition. There are still a couple hanging out there that were on five-year time limits, it'll be coming up this year, probably next year, so there are some of them that are still out there. All conditional use permits are just that, conditional, and if there is a dog daycare that's close to homes, that we continue to get kind of feedback from the community that we need to keep an eye on this one, any of those can still be approved with a, with a custom-tailored time condition. There's a couple, and they're still floating out there, that have some rigid timelines that were, when they come back to council, if, if the community has had no issues, and we've had no issues for many years, we would be recommending no time condition on any of those that are coming back.
And has, has the community had any questions or issues with this particular establishment?
So while this zoning code is for the city, city as a whole, there's only one establishment that has taken advantage of this zoning code amendment back from '23, and both at the original use permit and at the renewal that came one year later, we had zero feedback from the community.
Okay, and if there was kind of issues that were coming, you would bring that to us, and we might then go back to a one or some other number rather than unconditional or address it in another way if there were issues being forth to us?
Absolutely. And the, the one instance, the one business that took advantage of this code amendment does have an expiration coming up on their, their use permit, so that one will be coming back to council for one more time. If this code amendment is successful, then we would be recommending no time condition unless there is community input that requests otherwise.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions or comments? Councilmember Hawkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update on this one. While I agree that the one-year is a bit outdated, especially if they've been good partners with the city, I still think from my perspective, I would like to see some sort of cap added to this amendment. So in my opinion, I don't think it needs to be a one or a three, but if we could put maybe an additional five-year max before and then have to revisit it, I would be more comfortable with something like that than leaving it open-ended.
All right, no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number nine, FTZ Program. Michael is going to be coming up. Presentation on the removal of turf. No, that, is that this one? No, this was the federal trade zone. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to give a brief overview of the Foreign Trade Zone Program, benefits for companies, and FTZ sites in Chandler, including the three warehouses proposed in this request The Foreign Trade Zone Program is a federal program that was established in 1934. It is administered by the U.S. Customs and Border Protection, and it offers special customs procedures designed to increase U.S. exports and capital investments. Foreign trade zones, or FTZs, are considered outside of U.S. customs territory, and they allow activity involving foreign items such as manufacturing, assembly, repairs, testing to occur before formal customs entry. And through this, FTZs can help offset some customs advantages that overseas competitors have for U.S. cus, companies. So foreign trade zone benefits include duty deferral. So duties are paid only when they formally enter U.S. customs territories, when they leave the FTZ site. This can enhance cash flow for companies. There's duty exemption, so duties are not paid if that merchandise is re-exported. There's duty reduction. So manufacturers that are taking components and producing a product, they can choose to pay the lower duty rate for the component or the finished products. And duty elimination, so if products are obsolete, damaged, scrapped, wasted, they don't pay duties on that. Weekly entry savings, that is reduced customs entry filing fees for the companies. And then direct delivery is streamlined import process for companies and FTZs. So the map shows the six companies in Chandler that currently have FTZ sites. These include Intel, Avnet, Ringchem, Viavi, SKU Distribution, and Catalina Components. Those are shown in blue, and then the orange is the three proposed Intel warehouses, with two in West Chandler and one in the airport area. And these proposed sites would provide improved logistics and operational efficiencies, according to Intel. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I called this one in because I wanted to make sure the community understand, you know, have a better understanding of what we're doing here with Intel and what we're looking to, to do. I didn't have any further questions to add to, I just kind of wanted to. I didn't have any further questions to add to, I just kind of wanted to let the community know what we're doing for this particular item. Thanks, Mayor, that's it.
Councilmember Orlando?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Michael, so, as you know, the TZ, these zones are allowed to take less property tax. Will this come back and make us whole on this issue? Will they be paying the 100% property tax and aren't be paying?
Through the Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, Intel has agreed to not seek that property reclassification, so there would be no financial impact on the city.
And if they improve inside, sales tax, anything like that, still comes back to the city, correct?
Councilmember, yes.
So, there's really no change to the city's income stream, I guess, lack of a better term right now. It's really all to allow them to export and import at a much quicker pace. That's really what this is pointing down to, right?
Councilmember, yes, it's supporting Intel and doing business more efficiently.
So, the final question is, is this, as long as they have the free trade zone, then the property tax remain? In other words, they can't come back 10 years from now and say, hey, we want to renegotiate this?
Councilmember, no, it's included in the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Chandler and the city of Phoenix, which is the grantee for foreign trade zone number 75. If they were to seek the reclass, that FTZ designation could be pulled.
Okay, all right, so we're protected, is what I'm hearing you say?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Next called in was Heat Relief, Ryan Bonk, presentation on our heat relief programming.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Council, thanks for calling this in tonight, give me a chance to just talk a little bit about our heat relief services for this year. To start out, I'm not sure I have this quite on the right. There we go. So, as you know, in our region, heat is a very serious issue, and it can be disproportionately harmful to people who have low income and are unable to, you know, get out of the heat. Or provide, you know, an adequate amount of air conditioning in their own homes. But it can be really severely impactful to those who don't have housing, and those who are experiencing a lot of time out on the streets. And so, taking a look, starting with last year's numbers, this data is from Maricopa County, and you can see, and there were more, but this is the latest data. There were at least 608 people who died in Maricopa County related to heat last year. And eight of these deaths occurred right here in Chandler. And unfortunately, we, in the Neighborhood Resources Department, with the type of work that we do with homeless engagement, knew the majority of these clients. 60% of heat-related deaths are, across the county, are for people older than 50, so it definitely, age definitely plays a factor. And three out of four of them occurred outside, and that's what happened here in Chandler. And about 50% across the valley of those who died were people experiencing homelessness. So, as you know, in Chandler, we've always had a very robust response, and that is true this year. And so, this year, we are extremely excited and happy to be working with Ascend, our partner, right down the street, on heat relief services. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about what we have going on during the day this year, and then move into the evening. So, this year, as we have, for many years past now, we have a very day respite center. And at a day respite center, you can, anybody can come in, doesn't, you can be experiencing homelessness, you can be housed, but maybe not have the funds to keep your AC at a level that keeps you cool and healthy. So, you can come into the day respite center, you can get a drink, you can get something to eat, there are cots, you can rest for the daytime. There's no time limit, except that it is a day respite center. That's happening over at Ascend. We also have eight cooling stations all around the city, those are operated generally at our own public facilities, and those happen during regular business hours. The difference between a cooling center and a respite center is that a cooling center is meant to walk in, grab a bottle of water, maybe sit in the lobby for a few minutes, you know, get out of the heat, cool down. But then you might leave and go on your way. So, there are eight of those around Chandler, and they're fully stocked with all of those supplies, and anyone in the public is free to use those. In addition, Solari, or you might know them as 2-on-1, they operate that service, can be called from anywhere around the valley. And you can get transportation from wherever you are to a cooling center or a respite station. They have also been working with everyone around the valley to make sure that our messaging and our signage is available, and, you know, the same across the valley. So, people have an easy time recognizing where they might be able to get these services. What's new here in Chandler this year, and extremely exciting, is that we have also opened overnight services. And so, beginning on June 13th, I believe it was June 13th, yeah, it was Friday the 13th, I remember that well. We opened our downtown Chandler Senior Center for overnight services for the first time, and on the first night, we had 24 guests, which blew us away. These were people who needed to get in from the heat, in addition to the other shelters that we already have operating in Chandler. So, that picture on the screen there is actually a picture of our first night. It went extremely well. Ascend is also our operator of that service. So, folks who want to utilize that service, check in at Ascend each night, and they can, they are transported to the senior center. And we provide that service from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM every night. We provide dinner when they get there, and then in the morning, when they get back to Ascend, they receive breakfast. Our average since we opened on June 13th has been 26 participants a night, and is growing. So, the item you have before you tonight is for us to get into contract with Ascend for these services, and to enter into a user agreement for use of our facilities, because this is a great partnership that we have. With that, Mayor, Council, any questions?
Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much for bringing this to Mayor and Council this afternoon. I know with Ms. Donovan, what an amazing program this is going to be, because that's what they do. They usually provide a great place for those who are unsheltered. You mentioned something concerning, they go to Ascend, and they get signed up there, then we transport them to the senior center. There, they have dinner, and then they spend the night. And the next day, do they have time for hygiene and all these things before they return back, wherever they need to go?
Through the Mayor, Council, or I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. So, we do have those services, but not exactly in that order. So, in the morning, they wake up, so we are using our senior center. So, it's very important to us that we're also able to continue the regular services that we provide at the senior center. So, we do have an early morning, we start wake up around 5:30, and then we start busing back to Ascend. Once they get to Ascend, then we serve breakfast, and there are showers and laundry facilities at another one of our providers, available during the day.
During the day, where they go?
Yes.
I know also in the past that we were using the Salvation Army, so can you tell us, we're not using that site anymore?
Yeah, so, for the last couple of years, we did partner with the Salvation Army for these services. This year, they did let us know that they're moving in a new direction, they're more focused on some of their ministry efforts and some of their youth services. And therefore, didn't feel like this particular service was a great fit for them, but they are still a tremendous partner. They are offering a cooling center during the day, so there is, you know, a clientele that does go there, they can drop in, get water. And then the other thing is, they still have a shower trailer with laundry facilities, so that is where our guests are getting the laundry service and showers during the day.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
So, therefore, how many respite's now we have? I know you make very distinction between cooling and respite, how many respite's do we have throughout the city?
Great question, and I realize I skipped a slide too, so I can go over that. But we have eight cooling centers, and the cooling center is the one where you can just walk in, get water, have a quick break, and then be on your way. We have one day respite center, where you can go all day, that is happening at Ascend on California Street. And then at night, we have one respite overnight center, which is happening at the Chandler Senior Center, also operated by Ascend, but happening in our facility.
Yeah. What are we doing to really educate the community, so that one can tell the other, if someone called me, and you know they will?
Yeah.
I wanted to know where to go, and what's going on, even for the cooling center, if someone's house or trailer break down, and they want to get somewhere to cool up. How do we put that message out?
Through the Mayor, Vice Mayor, a lot of ways. So, at the beginning of the season, we had a lot of news media, you know, the Mayor, myself, and others, we did a lot of news stories, both written and on the news, you know, on TV and on the radio. We've also had a lot of social media, so you'll see us on, you know, the city's Instagram and Facebook and all of that. We have a brochure that we've given out to public safety, and also to nonprofits that may encounter people who might need this service. Our cares team that operates out of the Neighborhood Resources Department, and our navigation team, who is on the streets. And even our PHA, for people who might be of lower income and, you know, trying to really watch their bills, are giving out that information. And also, organizations that work with seniors, because seniors are the ones that tend to try to really balance...
Yes, their budget.
Their budget, their AC in the summer, and so we want to make sure they know that they have somewhere they can come to be cool during the day.
Right, thank you so much, very thoughtful. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you again, Ms. Donovan, for saying yes to this project.
I have a couple of questions, and then Councilmember Orlando. So, how many are we seeing at the respite center during the day? I know that this is a repeat, Saliana's Salvation Army has done it for a few years, but what's, what are our numbers looking like there, and do we have a comparison of previous years?
And Mayor, I apologize, there's a slide, oh, if they can put the slide back up now, I did skip that slide on accident, so I can give you a little update. So, to date, we started the day service on May 1st, we started the night service on June 13th. So, this is an overall look at both of those services combined, so we've seen 168 unduplicated individuals. 60% of those are men, 40% of those are women, and we have had two families come into our overnight since we opened. We were very fortunately able to get them straight into our non-congregate shelter program the next day, so that was a great thing. In the daytime, we're seeing a lot of people, we're having 51 unduplicated persons a day visit the Ascend site. So, that is a lot of people. And then you can see some of the services that we've been giving out, over 4,000 bottles of water already, 1,200 snack bags, 800 nutritious meals. At night, I mentioned earlier, we're having an average of about 26 a night, but in the last week, we've had all in the 30s.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't suppose we have a good number at the libraries, I mean, that's a little more awkward place to try to discern and determine someone's condition. But we would know what we're giving out there.
That's exactly right. We are monitoring the level of supplies we're giving out, and we have our, we have a liaison to the libraries that meets with them every week to talk about, you know, if we're meeting their need, do they have more need, what's happening? We also have, which is new this year, an incident command team, which meets weekly, which is people from every city department, including our new and amazing incident, our emergency manager. And she just helps us all touch base to see what we're seeing at every location, and if there's anything we need, or if we need to have a change in operations to meet the need, or anything like that.
Yeah, and I know that, I'm grateful to you, Trinity, and Ascend, I know you've got a lot of experience with running the iHelp program through the years. And also making sure that we're keeping our guests safe by, you know, how to, what to look for, what to check, the questions to ask for intake. So, I'm grateful to you. Ryan, I'm also grateful, I know we're the second center in the valley, I think last year there was one in Phoenix, so... Mag has a hand on, in terms of encouragement and assisting, so I'm grateful that we're able to help our residents with this particular program overnight. And thank you, and Leah, and the team for your work, and really ministering to the needs of our community, so.
Thank you, Mayor, and if I could just say, we couldn't be more grateful to Ascend for stepping up when we needed that, and they're just the perfect partner for this. They, the level of service that they provide, and the level of care that they provide clients, and the relationship that clients have with them, really helps the willingness to use the service. And we just couldn't be more grateful to have them in our backyard.
Great. Councilmember Orlando?
Yeah, Ryan, this is a great program, obviously a great partnership, thank you, Trinity, for all the work you do there. I guess the question I have is, this seems like a great opportunity for our navigators to enter, what are we doing in that area to get them the long-term help they need? Whether it's a home, or a place to live, or work conditions, or social security card, whatever they need to get them the long-term, what are we doing there?
Yeah, through the Mayor, Councilman Orlando, thank you so much for asking that. So, we were able to put together such an amazing program, that our navigators are actually staffing the overnight, along with Ascend staff. So, they already have relationships with the people that are coming in, and we have seen some amazing things. People who have not been able to come into an inside service before, like an iHelp or any other kind of, even our non-congregate shelter, are starting to come in, because they trust the staffing between Ascend and our navigators. And now, we are strongly encouraging folks who come in to start working with our navigators, if they haven't already, and that is happening. And we are already starting to see some amazing success stories, because now we're offering a full, a full day into night service with our navigators already attached. So, we're already starting to see incredible outcomes, I can't wait to be able to come back at the end of the program to talk about the difference that's made. I know that, you know, Trinity and I have had many conversations about the, you know, the symbioticness of our navigators and her team being able to work together. And I think that's what makes us truly different, and what's gonna make our program a really good success.
Well, good, again, it's a long-term effort that we're looking to help, seems like a great opportunity for us to get that help. So, build the trust, and then let's see if we get these folks, you know, the long-term care that they need. I see Trinity's nodding her head, so, all right, you got it, Trinity, right? All right, thanks, Mayor.
Additional questions or comments? All right, thank you, Ryan, thank you, Trinity. One last question has been called in, item 31, this is the Turf to Zero Escape Program. Jeremy Abbott. John, good to see you back in the audience, how's that knee doing? All right, glad to hear.
Number two.
All right, Jeremy.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you again for giving me an opportunity to talk to you about our Turf to Zero Escape Program. One of the agenda items we have before you. So, I want to kind of start off, first of all, with the why. Why do we want to convert grass in these retention basins to zero escape? And a lot of that goes back to the city's strategic framework, where Chandler has embraced water sustainability. So, we want to be the leaders in terms of water conservation. And, you know, just from a statistical perspective, some of these large basins can consume anywhere from 3 to 6 million gallons of water per year, per basin. So, we're talking pretty large volumes of water. And, you know, to define, you know, zero escape, zero escape, it's a type of landscape that uses minimal irrigation. By incorporating drought-tolerant trees, shrubs, and native grasses. And it really is just more than rocks. So, this slide that you see here is the plant palette that's being used in all of these basins. And identifies the various types of trees, shrubs, bushes, and proves that zero escaping can be a lush, colorful, and impactful environment. So, why now? Why are we doing this now? Well, again, Chandler, you know, has been committed to water conservation, and has a long history of that conservation. But transitioning from turf to the zero escaping is expensive, and we actually have an opportunity where we've leveraged some state funding, a grant, to help us cover the cost of that. Beyond that, I'd also like to emphasize the future of water in Arizona, which is extremely important. And although Chandler's water portfolio is very strong, we know that we will be impacted in some ways in the future. And so, this is just another way of doing what we can to be better prepared. And so this is just another way of of doing uh what we can to be better prepared for that future and reducing our consumption as much as possible, when possible. So is there a savings when using uh zero escape? Well, again, uh to emphasize the three million dollar grant um that that was uh approved and funded by WIFA uh to help offset these costs, plus there's a utility savings cost in the reduction of of that water. And not to mention, more importantly, the twenty-two some million gallons of of expected water savings per year by transitioning these basins uh to zero escape landscaping. Uh there there may be a slight increase uh to maintenance. We don't have exact numbers at this point, but we feel that that can also be managed with our partners in community services, or the arborists, or the experts. But, you know, how we how we trim and and how we perform these cuttings throughout the year can also help offset um any expected increase in costs. And another special note, too, that we did not increase the upcoming fiscal year operating budget for additional maintenance. Do in part two, because the with the scheduling of this project, most of the plantings and the trees won't happen until next spring. So we'll be at the tail end of the fiscal year anyway. So this graphic shows the uh seven uh locations uh that are uh proposed. And um one one point, and and this graphic has quite a bit of information, but it calls out the various sites. But essentially, these seven locations uh total little over a million square feet in turf. So why these seven and why a part of phase one? Well, they're our highest consumptive water use locations in terms of uh turf basin. So we figured we we'd look at and address um those. Those are going to make the largest impact to uh again, our water demand as a city and and help uh support that portfolio. So public involvement, so uh over the um close to fourteen months now since this project started, now staff has engaged the public uh to be involved in the various designs and the concepts that were proposed. Thirty-five hundred residents were were notified via postcards. We held the very first public meeting a little over a year ago uh in May. And as you can see there, we had uh twenty-five uh residents attend that meeting. We have a website set up to also push out and show the public the various concepts uh that we're proposing for these locations. And there's been, you know, uh various emails, calls, and even some surveys that were also pushed out that we've received uh throughout this um this process. And in total, um we've received uh probably less than fifty comments from from the public. We also took uh the proposal to the uh Council Sustainability and Technology Subcommittee, and that meeting uh was held in early November. And their staff presented to the subcommittee, again, the options, the feedback that we received from the residents, and uh some direction was given um as far as how how staff should move forward. We've addressed um that direction, and we've had communications with residents. We've made some modifications to some of the concepts to accommodate some of some of that feedback, and and some of those items are reflected in the final design. So before I move to the next slide that that gives uh you and and the public kind of an idea of what these areas will look like as a transition, I want to highlight um the importance of of moving forward with this project in terms of uh our WIFA grant and and the overall schedule. So if council uh awards this project, mobilization of work will start as as early as July, so next month. And that's important, because we need to take these hot, drier months, take advantage of that time to kill off the turf. Uh that takes time. And then as we approach the fall and winter months, the grading, the removal of the turf, the irrigation work and preparation for the landscaping and the plantings will all happen with the plantings happening in the spring of twenty twenty-six. The other uh potential impact that I wanted to bring up is is our obligation um with the grant in terms of timing. So we're obligated to to um make substantial progress by December of this year in order to um receive that grant funding. So again, timing of of this project is is really critical. So this slide, I want to show you, um this is one of the one of the basins. This is site one oh seven. And in the upper right-hand corner, you can see uh a picture of what that basin looks like. It it's it's open, you know, there's a handful of trees, but it's mostly grass, mostly turf. To the left of that is the plan view of uh the various plantings that are proposed to replace uh that turf. And then directly below that is a rendering of what this basin from that viewpoint will look like after uh construction, essentially in the first year, uh with all the plantings being placed. And then to to its right is a rendering within the first five years. So obviously, we're the expectation is that these trees and shrubs will will grow, create that group, you know, that that can those canopies, the shade, and and a more inviting environment than um just a wide-open um turf space. And then this slide here um highlights uh potential locations for what we'll call phase two. Uh these are much smaller sites uh than the locations that we have identified in phase one, and collectively total um, you know, around eight hundred square, or excuse me, eight hundred thousand square feet of of turf. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you so much for the um presentation. One particular area, um if you go back to the map on the Chandler Boulevard. Yeah, so I've had reach out for site four eighteen B um by constituents um that may not be happy about that change happening, because it's been long in their community for thirty, forty-plus years. And um that green span, I mean, that's what a lot of the neighbors had, you know, kind of have moved themselves forward. And one of the active members, I I don't know if you've seen, they've they've done a petition to ask for that to remain the same um because of the fact that that's been in their community. And I would hate to pull that particular basin into a zero escape because there are dogs and stuff like that. Because, you know, when you're taking away grass, the dogs need stuff, you know, need to run in that neighborhood. I have a lot of animal furry friends. And, you know, the our furry friends, especially in the summer, like my dog wears shoes um because it's so hot, they can't walk on on the pavement, so I have to put shoes on my dog. Say boo, January, they're Yorkies. Um but other people who have larger-sized animals need that basin to to run. So I I'm going to ask that we, I'm going to ask that we pull four eighteen B. That was the only one that really um continued to, the continuous reach out about that particular area was consistent um as well as getting other people. And I had staff reach out to the community member that was concerned about it. Um they did reach out, um I think they've talked to them several times, and they are committed to that being green. I don't see that being a reason, because if they're using it for, you know, their furry friends and they enjoy it. I mean, that's, I think, I believe that's the only strip of grass on the Chandler Boulevard. If you go, if you're driving on Chandler Boulevard, it's the only, it's the only long stretch of grass. So um I'm thinking to have that one, um council pull fourteen, four eighteen B, to have it pulled from uh from the group of getting zero escape, because that's a community cherish, um they're cherished in that area. So that's kind of where I'm at with that.
Mayor.
Councilmember Sinus.
Thank you. To build off of what Councilmember Harris is is stating on that, since I have had residents reach out to me as well. And sitting on the subcommittee, you know, there's been a lot of thought on these projects and these specific sites, um just because it's a long-time basins, green belts that residents have enjoyed over the years. And I understand the 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 need to savings, water conservation, all that. It's great, it's part of our plan. Um but staff has done a very good job in reaching out and having these conversations with the residents and coming to a meeting point, whether it's we're reducing the grass or, um you guys have been very creative and accommodating with that. With this specific law, um I agree with Councilmember Harris, uh if we can maybe postpone it or put it into phase two until we get some more consideration and feedback. I was just reading the feedback on the on the resident input. And everyone there, their comments are kind of against it, and then we we reached out back to them and either left voicemails or weren't able to contact them as of June ninth. Um so I kind of want to make sure we get in there, have that conversation, whether it's um reimagining that area. Maybe it's partly grass or part, you know, rock, uh maybe reducing it, or just coming up with a better idea. That way, everyone's um content with what we put down there.
I just, I appreciate the work that we're putting into this program. I I re-zero escaped my front yard two years ago, and in the first year, in the summer, I'm seeing ten thousand gallons of water savings, and I've got a pretty lush front yard. We've got about fifteen plants in there. And um I I just think, long-term, this is the direction we need to go. Even in the winter, we're seeing three thousand gallon savings there. So put them together, seventy-five, eighty thousand gallons just in my little front yard. And I I'd also know that we've added uh and built up three new parks that are also meeting the needs of our residents on our triple play day that we we were able to uh celebrate some new gathering spots. I know for people that that might need to change or or at least consider. Are there are there parks close to this one in particular? I'm not opposed to to moving this, you know, or moving it off, but I'm just curious what uh what alternatives are there that are that are walking distance?
Yes, uh Mayor, thank you for the question. So on on this graphic, um the green uh locations in proximity to all of these basins are our local city parks. So for four eighteen B, um specifically, you've got uh, let's see, Desert Breeze to the north, Mountain View to the um southwest, and then you also have um Harder Park to the uh northeast there of of that site.
Okay. So somewhat close, but maybe not as convenient is what I was what I would say. Okay.
And Mayor, that was one of the main concerns that the constituents were reaching out to me about, because they they won't have that green area um close anymore for them to go and take their dogs to.
Jeremy, what would this, um again, I I I'm not hearing any arguments with any others, but I I know with this WIFA, the the urgency and the expediency of of wanting to move ahead, what would that do if if this park gets pushed into a second phase or maybe a relook? Would that would that jeopardize our our WIFA dollars? Do we still have enough to uh be able to go ahead with that?
So um Mayor, the good question. And and as of right now, we don't, we don't know specifically what the impact will be. Um again, in order for us to get that grant, uh there was, you know, indications that there were X square feet of turf um proposed to be removed. And uh how that may or may not impact the the grant, um we don't have that at this time. Could there be an impact? There could be. Um and it could uh be in terms of maybe a reduction to that three million dollars that we get related to maybe the percentage change of turf. But we're just, you know, guessing at this point.
Is there any way that some of those, we could maybe combine a couple of those smaller ones to make up the that were slated for phase two, then and add those to make up that difference? If council would like to pull this one, is there a way to to accommodate that delta?
Yeah, I I think that's definitely a possibility, um for sure. Um again, too, our concern really is is going back to the timing.
Yeah.
So we're obligated to um have about fifty percent of this project completed by December of this year.
Okay. I'm wondering if you could maybe answer these questions so that we could be knowledgeable on how to vote on Thursday and if maybe if there's an amendment to be made, um and if there's some other options, if if council would pull that one, is there a way to make that up or find this out so we can make the most knowledgeable decisions on Thursday?
Mayor.
Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Council. First, City Manager, and then Councilmember Poston.
Mayor, I was just going to suggest, we can come back to you before Thursday with maybe a couple of options and also do some follow-up with the residents that have reached out. This is an interesting location. It's actually partially split over both sides of Country Club Way, which is that main street um that cross-sex with uh Chandler Boulevard. So there might be a way to break up the site a little more naturally than some of the others. Harder Park is very close to the site as well and does have some other retention basins to it also. So we'll kind of play between both of those locations and see if we can't find a way to bring you a better option before Thursday when you have to actually make a vote on this.
Okay, thank you. Um Councilmember Poston?
Sure. Are these sites being left with no grass? I was under the impression that some of them would have at least some grass left.
Uh through the mayor, uh Councilmember Poston, yes. Some of the sites, and again, through coordination with the residents, we will be um providing some turf in in the area, in some of the basins.
Okay.
Not all, but 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 some.
And this one specifically that Councilmember Harris is talking about is wouldn't have any grass in its current proposal?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I I just have one other question. So you had mentioned that maintenance might be slightly up. Is it, so the offset of not mowing and perhaps not blowing as often, that that would be offset by shrub and tree trimming or even to a more sensitive? I mean, if we don't have to go in there every week and or every other week and cut grass, which isn't cheap, that you're saying you think it's going to be about the same or slightly more to do shrub and tree maintenance?
Correct, yes, uh Mayor. Um right now, that that's suspect as well. Um but again, uh in communications and partnerships with community services, it is slight. We we don't have exact numbers. Uh again, just from the sheer number of trees and shrubs that we're we're expecting to to plant in these locations um under, I'll say, normal practices, that definitely could be the case. But again, too, um the practice of how we maintain these landscape areas is is changing. You know, we're not um uh cutting and pruning and shaping, you know, all these these bushes and shrubs and trees. Uh we're we're going to let them grow more naturally, uh so that does require a lot less pruning and trimming over the year.
I just don't miss dragging that lawnmower out anymore to the front yard. Haven't regretted that once, so. Council, any additional questions or comments? It sounds like we've got staff that will get back to us this week before Thursday. All right. Jeremy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Council, that's all the questions that have been called in for tonight. We will have opportunity to vote on these on Thursdays. So with that, that concludes our study session.